Council meeting of July 7, 2014. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempaluk.
Here.
Councilman Amador.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Okay, you guys are messing around. Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman McEldowney. Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that eight of us out of the nine are here. The one not here is Mr. McEldowney. Councilman McEldowney has phoned ahead, said he's running a couple of minutes behind, but should be here before we go into executive session. And then once we come out of executive session, I need to make sure that the record knows that he has shown up. So first item on the agenda is a couple of executive sessions. I need a motion to enter those executive sessions using the language from the agenda. Is anyone prepared to make that motion, Mr. Bullock? Move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (for) (e) for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding an agreement for Victory Crossing Development and for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding DIA issues. This is 1441 and 1425, two separate executive sessions, but they're both on the same issue, instructing negotiators. Okay, is there a second? Second. Mr. Benson seconds the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're now going to go into executive session. I noticed we do have one resident in the audience. Sir, we're going to be in executive session probably until seven o'clock, okay? So I just didn't want you to wonder where we went or what's going on, but in our agenda we had it down. I just didn't want you to feel left out or ignored.
Sir.
Okay, so we'll be back around seven o'clock.
Now I'll have the staff go around with the microphone and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Pam Sprotler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Yerma Serna.
Bradley Johnson.
Trudy Smith.
Lisa Bonnet, Suncar Energy.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Thank you.
Ed Roberts, Engineering.
Bill Halterman, Sinclair.
Shannon Walsh, Sinclair.
Rex Wells, Sinclair.
Dave Saulco, Sinclair.
Michael Wagner, Sunoco.
Laura Ola, Sunoco Logistics.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Roy Hayes.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Kathy Blakeman, Human, Troy Smith with the Police Department.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight. First item on the agenda is Proclamations and Recognitions. We have one proclamation, Break for Bella. I'd like to ask the city attorney to please read the proclamation.
Commerce City, Colorado proclamation. Whereas coinciding with the end of the school year, the summer months of June through August represent increased activity among children in neighborhoods and surrounding streets. And whereas anti pedestrian accidents reached a dangerous level in 2013, and every day at least one person is injured by a hit-and-run driver. And whereas motor vehicle crashes are a leading cause of death for children two through fourteen years of age. And whereas pedestrian fatalities involving children under the age of fourteen are greatest during the summer months with more than eighty percent of accidents occurring at non-intersection locations. And whereas children move in unpredictable ways and are the most difficult pedestrians to see, making distracted driving something that causes more than nine deaths and one thousand injuries every day especially dangerous. And whereas it is our duty as concerned citizens and parents to ensure we are creating a safe environment for our children, as well as educating all Coloradans to practice safe driving and pedestrian behavior. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Sean Ford, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Commerce City, hereby recognize the Break for Bella Summer Safe Neighborhood Driving Awareness Campaign starting June one through August thirty-one, two thousand fourteen. City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a motion? Mr. Bullock?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve proclamation fourteen thirteen hereby recognizing Break for Bella Safe Summer Neighborhood Driving Awareness Campaign starting June first through August thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. McElroy?
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There's a spelling error on the last paragraph where it says now they're at one T resolved instead of be it resolved. If we could get that corrected on the proclamation, that'd be great.
Bob, did you hear that?
Yes, we got it. We make clerical correction.
Thank you. All right, next item. All right, next item on the agenda is Citizen Communication. We have five people that have signed up tonight. And when you come up to the podium, when I call your name, please state your name and address for the record. And you'll be given three minutes to address the city council. We'll start with Mr. Hayes. Good evening. I don't think that's on yet. Go ahead.
Okay, Mayor of City Council. Hey, I live right behind the high school, you know, the old high school? And we had a little fire there yesterday, and I was just wondering who's responsible for mowing them weeds back there?
Property owners are responsible for mowing the weeds on property.
No, no, the school, the old school property.
The property owner was responsible for mowing the weeds, yes, sir.
So it'd be the school district, and I need to see about my property damage?
Well, but I think, I think there's some more that we need to go into there. I talked to the chief a minute ago. And here's what I'm trying to figure out. The, the, the police were out there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And your trailer and shed were damaged as part of this fire that happened in the weeds?
Yeah.
Okay. Where the, and I don't know as though it matters, but some of those properties are unincorporated in Adams County? Now fireworks are illegal in Commerce City.
Yes.
They're, they're not illegal in Adams County, at least certain kinds. So a lot of those properties over there, it's different from house to house whether they're incorporated or not incorporated. So whether they were violating a city ordinance as part of lighting their fireworks off is number one. But number two, if they were lighting fireworks off and caused property damage, then what I would suggest is that you go, while you're here tonight, with the chief of police out and around the corner and file a police report on the damages that were caused to your property.
Okay.
Okay?
Excellent.
Not necessarily that you need to go to the district, you can go tell them that they should mow. But I'm going to go a step further and say that we have code enforcement that should be telling them they need to mow anyway. Okay?
Yeah.
So to rectify the problem and, and deal with your property issue, I would recommend filing a report with Commerce City Police Department, and the chief can take you around the corner and, and help you to do that.
Okay.
And we need your name and address.
Yes, oh, I'm Roy Hayes, 6970 Burke Street, Commerce City.
Great, does that, does that take care of your need?
Yeah, well, see, like, so I'm in Commerce City and right three doors down is Adams County on the other side, so.
Yeah, and so I don't know if they were shooting off, you know, they may not have been violating the law by shooting off the fireworks, but when property damages caused, you're responsible for the property damage. And so what I would do is file a report, because you do live in Commerce City. File a report with, with the Commerce City Police Department. Let them do an investigation and follow up on the damages to your property and who's responsible. Because the responsible party isn't going to be the school district, it isn't going to be the, the city. It's going to be whoever caused the fire. Okay? Regardless whether they were in the county or in the city. And it's our responsibility, and we need to go over and take a look at the school district properties, not just the old high school site. We need to take a look at the other properties they own and make sure that they're in compliance with our ordinance on weeds. And, and cite them if they are not. Brian, you got that? All right, perfect. So hopefully that'll take care of the concern, but I would file that report with the Police Department.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Next, I will call Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Bradley Johnson, I live at 11316 Lansing Street, River Run, filing for, or River Run West, whichever you prefer. My purpose here tonight is to, well, I, I understand, I've had some conversations with Mr. Hoover, and I understand that the city is involved with getting requests for a proposal for a new trash contract, whoever the provider is, and I'm, I'll be quite honest, I'm here to lobby for restoring our, the voluntary drop-off place on Highway 2. As many of you know, the people of Commerce City were originally supposed to get two such facilities on, on the, the contract from 2009. For whatever reason, we only got one at the very outset of this program. And I know, as a personal eyewitness, I, numerous times, I drove by the facility on Highway 2, and there was quite often stuff that had no business being there. Box springs, mattresses, TVs, tires, you know. I understand it was a real kind of a pain in the neck for the city. My feeling is that removing that, that facility there probably would not do a whole lot to discourage that type of behavior from certain people who are going to abuse it. Forcing them to maybe come up with more creative and disparate places to dump stuff like that. Quite possibly causing more time, more money, and more headaches for neighborhood services. I understand it was, I don't know, a blight for the city to have to deal with. But it leaves a section of our city, the, the folks that live, well, it's not technically in the city, but it's surrounded by often the Rosemary Eightieth Neighborhood up in there. They're, they're totally without a, a resource. And they're, they were using it and the, and the improper dumping that was done there was done quite possibly by people who don't even live in Commerce City. I'd, I'd really like to see, see that restored. The city council, five years ago, and staff, they did a really, you know, showed a lot of leadership in introducing this recycling program. I know for a fact that it's been successful, because Mr. Hoover sends me statistics every month and citing with figures about how many tons have been diverted, electricity saved, water saved, trees saved, and all kinds of things, so I know it's working. What I'd like to see out of the new contract is at least, at the barest minimum, use what we had in 2009 as a baseline. That, you know, the, the group that Trudy Smith and I have been associated with, the whole concept was to ease and, and increase the number of residents that participate in recycling, making, making it easier for them. And this, the way it is this now, in my view, is a step back from this original document that we've, the city's been operating under, and I'd really like to see that return.
Okay. You know, first of all, I want to thank you for coming in. Secondly, I think the entire council is very supportive of recycling. And as we move forward in the process of doing an RFP, our staff is looking at ways to enhance recycling as part of that RFP. So we'll continue to monitor that as we go, go forward. But I can't imagine it being less than what was provided previously.
Okay, I'll, I'll be around, I'll try not to be too much of a test.
All right, thank you. All right, next, Mr. Lucas.
Dave Lucas?
Yep, David Lucas. There he is, out there.
I think he's going to do his present.
Oh, okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lucas is later on our agenda tonight.
All right, got it. So we don't need to have him up. All right, then we'll go with Ms. Burnett, Leisha. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you so much for having me tonight. I just wanted to come to you tonight and just give you a brief update on our pipeline project. As you all know, we've been working very closely with city council, with city staff, many departments within the city staff on this project. Last year, you guys approved our conditional use permit. We've been working through all of those details. And we start construction this week. So it's very exciting for us, I just wanted to give you a brief update on a few pieces and try to answer any questions if I can. So again, as I said, the last number of years, we've been working on this project. It's, it's, it's coming to fruition, we are starting construction this week. This particular pipeline is helping the refinery and Suncor have better reliability and better efficiency in bringing crude oil down from Guernsey, Wyoming, to Commerce City. It's going to be the feeder to the refinery here in Commerce City. So we start construction this week, as I mentioned. Consistent reliable supply is really important for the refinery. It's not giving us additional, we're not increasing throughput, but we're just becoming more reliable and more efficient in, in how we manage the business with this new pipeline. So I know you know all the details from the past approvals, I won't go into that. But I didn't want to let you know that we are starting construction. Construction is going to be going from Commerce City north. So we're working with a number of municipalities and with the county to ensure that we try to minimize impact on the community, its citizens, the environment, all of those. So we're doing our very best to do that. And I know our pipeline project team and the contractor have filed all of the permits with you all, but I did want to let you know that construction was starting. Citizens may see some flaggers or the appropriate detours with the traffic plan that was filed with the city and counties, so just want to make you aware of that. We are very committed at Suncor to safety, it is the core value, it is, it is the most important value we have. And so safety and looking after the citizens of Commerce City while we do this construction is paramount. So I would just urge the citizens to just pay attention to where you see the flaggers. Mostly around the area of sort of Sixtieth and Brighton is, is where the, the main construction will be again. So just pay attention to that. If citizens or you all have any questions, they can email us and talk to us. Give us their name, their address, and their contact information, and they can send that to RockyMountainProject@Suncor.com. And again, just want to make sure that everyone is aware that construction is starting. We're very appreciative of the support that all the departments at the City of Commerce City have given us, as well as the other municipalities that we're working with in the county, to help us bring this project to fruition. So thank you so much, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Leisha, for the update. Is there any questions, Leisha, about the Suncor Pipeline Construction Project as we move forward? What are your, what is the timetable, Mr. Bullock?
So we'll be constructing from Commerce City north to about 120th, so all the way through to Thornton, through now, through the end of this year. But the completion all the way up to the, the state line, to where we, we've already brought down some of the project from, from Wyoming to the state line already. So we'll be marrying up with that. So we'll be sort of meeting that. So the total project will be completed at sometime in 2016.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, any other questions or comments?
And I would just urge all, so, sorry, Mayor Ford. I would just urge all of you, I know you have various constituents that you're out talking to. If you hear that people have questions, you can reach out to me directly, you know how to reach me. You can email the project team, we will get them answered. We're already following that process, we have a very robust process through, you know, through FEMSA and how we do these projects to, to take names and information. We track those, we get back to everybody, I took a number of calls last week. We will get back to everybody that writes to us. So if you have anyone that contacts you directly, send them to me, I'll take the calls or I'll get the right person on our project team to get back to them.
Have you made contact with the businesses where you may impact their, their opportunity to do business? Kind of like the waste management facility on Brighton?
Mayor Ford, members of council, we actually have someone on our team and with our contract, CH2M Hill, that is actually accountable for looking after every individual landowner and neighbor that is in touch with them. So if they have any issues, they go to them first, and then they come to us. So yes, we have.
As, as long as everything's covered, and I'm sure that it would be, but we appreciate the update.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And that concludes our citizen communication portion of the meeting. And we will move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are twelve items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on this council wish to remove any of these items? Let me see here, I'm going to start out with Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Yes, Resolution 2014-66, Resolution approving agreement between the City of Commerce City and Huntsville for design service for Tower Road whitening project.
Okay, you want to pull that one off?
Yeah.
All right.
For discussion.
Let me see, I just want to make sure I got everything straight here, Steve. That's Resolution 2014?
Yeah, it's the last one.
Sixty-six, correct? All right, I just want to make sure that I come back, circle back around to it. All right, Mr. McLeod.
I was prepared to make a motion, this was not to remove or modify.
All right, let me check one more time, is there anything else on the consent agenda that anyone on this council would like to have discussion on? Other than Resolution 2014-66? Saying none, Mr. McLeod, I'm open for a motion.
I would move, or move to approve the consent agenda as, as modified.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second, Mr. Amador?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Gaylor, please read the titles.
Title of ordnance Z-909-14. An ordinance rezoning Lot 1 from Adams County A3 to Commerce City R1 Zone District and Lot 2 from Adams County A3 to Commerce City Ag for the properties described in Exhibit A attached here to made apart hereof located at 10730 Potomac Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Title of ordnance Z-906-14. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado for rezoning to PUD Zone District and approving the PUD Zone document for the properties described in Exhibit A attached here to made apart hereof, generally known as parcels 1723... Six zeros, seven five, generally located south of East 104th Avenue between Potomac Street and Chivers Road and 1723, six zeros, 272, generally located south of 104th Avenue and east of Himalaya Street, Commerce City, Colorado. Title of ordnance AN-227-14. An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached here to made apart hereof commonly known as parcel 1723, six zeros, seven five, Commerce City, Colorado. Next, ordinance AN-228-14. An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached here to and made apart hereof commonly known as parcel 1723, six zeros, 272 West, Commerce City, Colorado. Next, ordinance AN-229-14. An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached here to made apart hereof commonly known as parcel 1723 with six zeros, 272 East, Commerce City, Colorado. Title of ordnance AN-231-14. An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached here to made apart hereof located at 10730 Potomac Street, Commerce City, Colorado. Title of ordnance 2008. An ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the E470 Transportation Safety Foundation grant in the amount of $2,500 for a day at the Commerce City Police Department, I'll correct that typo, program, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordnance 2009. An ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $5,000 to be used for Buffalo Run Golf Course, sand bunker, flood repairs, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordnance 2010. An ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $345,500 to be used for Sand Creek Trail flood repairs and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordnance 2011. An ordinance extending the temporary moratorium on the establishment of recreational marijuana business and related industry. of Recreational Marijuana Business and Related Industry. Title of ordinance 2012, Amending Section 8-1402 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code Regarding Liquor Violations Involving Underage Persons. And that is the extent of the amended consent agenda.
Thank you, Bob. I got a question for you real quick about the consent agenda. On ordinances that are introduced without a unanimous position from the council, can they make the consent agenda? Or does that have to be on a second reading basis?
They can be placed on the agenda, but then the person that, if they're no longer in favor of it, could simply ask that it be removed.
All right, I just wanted to double check, because I know Mr. Benson voted in opposition to Ordinance 2011, Extending the Temporary Moratorium on the Establishment of Recreational Marijuana Businesses and Related Industry. Are you okay, Mr. Benson, with that remaining on the consent agenda?
I can't see if it's going to make any difference.
Okay, all right, he's fine with it.
Yeah.
All right, so the consent agenda's been read. I'll take a motion to, oh, I already got a motion in a second, it's been read. I'll take a roll call vote on the consent agenda, outside of Resolution 2014-66. Let the record show, the consent agenda has been approved unanimously. Now we need to take up item Resolution 2014-66, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, question on the contract. Was this contract awarded on the lowest bid? And as far as, let me get this right here on the, as far as selecting the four city staff members, how were they chosen for this proposal?
I'd like to ask Public Works Director DeAndre to answer those questions.
Yes, Councilmember Douglas, the process we went through was a qualitative-based selection. So we received seven proposals, the four staff members, which included members of the public works staff, as well as a member from the community development staff, and then one person from the city and county of Denver staff, since it does involve going into, down into Denver, to the Tower-Pena interchange. So those five staff members received all seven proposals, they evaluated them all using a quantitative assessment on five different categories. It was not, they were not selected on lowest price only, but on these various categories of which one was cost, which was about a 30 percent factor, if I recall correctly. We narrowed that down to the top three based on those numbers, the actual scores, and then interviewed those three firms, and from there, we selected Hewitt Zollers.
Okay. Based on the staff members that you chose, what kind of experience do they have as far as contracts and in this situation here with the roadwork and everything?
Certainly. The project manager himself has extensive experience with similar roadway projects involving multiple agencies, developed areas, as well as the firm itself has significant capabilities. They are partnered with Felsberg Holt &amp; Ullvig, who's done work for the city before, and so we feel very strongly that they're a good team and an appropriate approach, very much identified the issues related to Tower Road, specifically honing in on the drainage issues and some of the things that we are looking for specifically in terms of especially drainage, and then working with the adjacent developers as well out there.
Okay. I'm sorry, I meant the four city staff members. Can you tell me who they are again?
Oh, excuse me, yes. It was myself, Mr. Ed Roberts, who's our project manager on that project, then it was Rochelle Ursel, who's our development engineer, Steve Timms, our planning manager with community development, and then it was Jess Ortiz from the city and county of Denver.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Benson?
Yeah, I just had a question about the, concerning new streetlights matching those along 104th Avenue will be installed along the length of the project. However, the designer, together with city staff, will explore the possibility of owning and maintaining the new streetlights and outfitting them with LED fixtures. Are LED fixtures compatible with what the streetlights on 104th look like?
Most likely. We'll need to explore that, but our direction would be is that we would look for a similar look to 104th, but we would be focusing on having the LED lights. If we can't get something that matches exactly, it would be something that would be close.
Because the structures on 104th are round, are they not? And LED is generally a rectangular type of fixture. Is there a real need to have it match, because the ones on 104th?
If I may, Mr. Benson, I'd like to circle back to what the resolution is doing. It's approving a designer, not necessarily going through the particular pieces that will be included in the design. I think we'll all have an opportunity to weigh in on some of those things, but I think right now, the issue before the council is to whether or not we approve the contract between the city and Hewitt Zollers. Would you agree with that, Ms. DeAndre?
Yes.
I understand that, I'm just trying to, if this is going to be, I guess this isn't the contract, but if this is the award recommendations, I'd just like to know what those recommendations are going to be.
Councilmember Benson, we are planning to come back to council in a study session to talk more about some of the specifics in terms of design, so we are planning for that in a future study session within probably the next month or so.
Good, okay.
We'll talk about those specifics then.
And someone from Hewitt Zollers will be there?
Yes.
That'll give you a better chance to ask those questions.
Okay, good.
All right. Any other questions regarding the approval of Hewitt Zollers for design services on the Tower Road project? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McElhany.
I would move to approve Resolution 2012-66.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Is it 2014-66?
It's 2014-66.
Yeah, on the screen here, it says 2012, so I think that's misnumbered.
2014, I got 2014.
Good catch, 14 on the agenda.
Mr. Douglas, second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. I need to ask for a, this is a resolution, you want a roll call vote anyway? Because it was part of the consent agenda?
Title.
Yeah, do the title. But do you want a roll call vote?
Voice vote, fine.
Title reads, Resolution approving an agreement between the City of Commerce City and Hewitt Zollers, Inc., for design services for Tower Road whitening project.
Thank you. I have a motion, the second title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And we'll move into the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have CU-105-14. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm going to invite the staff to come forward to make their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. The one public hearing before you this evening is case CU-105-14. The applicant this evening is Sinclair Transportation Company for property addressed at 8581 East 96th Avenue. Subject property is currently zoned I-3, it's located just north of 96th Avenue, just to the east of the railroad tracks there, with additional heavy industrial users located on the east side of the property, and then the Marty Farms Development for additional heavy industrial uses on the south side of 96th. This is an aerial of the subject property, again, 96th Avenue, the southern end of the site. The center of the site is generally used for the petroleum storage, with the southern end of the site mostly used for the distribution, the unloading, loading of their petroleum products, with significant portions of the site on the north, south, and east currently undeveloped. This is a Google Street View of the facility, 96th Avenue on the left-hand side of the image here, looking to the north. This is their truck terminal where trucks load and unload petroleum products, office building, and then landscaping just north of 96th. The request this evening is for the approval of a conditional use permit. The request is to bring the existing petroleum product containment operations into legal and conforming status. Subject property was located in unincorporated Adams County until 2007, at which time it was annexed by the city as part of the Northern Enclave Industrial Annexation, and has been operating as illegally non-conforming use since that time. The terminal itself's been there since 1964, Sinclair has operated there since 1976. They store gas, diesel, ethanol, biodiesel. They operate 24/7/365. They do loading and unloading of the petroleum products into tanks via rail, trucks, and pipelines. In terms of their tank operations, they have 14 storage tanks with about 565,000 barrels of capacity. The product is transferred to and from these tanks by pipes, valves, and pumps. They are protected by these earthen dikes that are visible here in the image, that are approved and regulated by the Environmental Protection Agency. In terms of the truck operations, trucks access the site via two controlled gates, one on the east side of the property, one on the west side of the property. There are two bays, if you will, one with three entrances and one with two entrances. The image on the left-hand side of the slide is the three-truck terminal. Each one of the terminals has this mechanized system where trucks hook the tanks up to these arms here, and then it's all monitored by computer for unloading and unloading the petroleum product, and that's what these trucks are getting ready to do, again, in that lower left-hand picture. There are minimal rail operations, generally three switches or loading/unloading operations per week. They generally load/unload the product from the bottom. You can see here that they attach this equipment to the bottom side of the tank, goes into the pipe, and then is distributed to the appropriate tank. In terms of loading the rail cars, they do that from the top. This arm here comes down, it enters into the tank, and it's pumped into the rail car and then sent on its way. In terms of their pipeline operations, they do receive and distribute petroleum products both on and off of the subject property via these pipelines. These pipelines are monitored on a continuous basis by computer systems that are located in these two electrical buildings here, again, monitored 24/7/365. At this time, what's bringing this forward is Sinclair does have plans for expansions. The first expansion is an immediate expansion, and that is to add a butane blending as part of their operation. Butane essentially is a lighter hydrocarbon that helps regulate the vapor pressure of the gasoline. Sinclair has stated that the proposed system is safe and efficient. Sinclair will own the system and the equipment, and then Sunoco Logistics will own the technology and operate the system. And in the future, likely within the next year, they plan to add an additional storage tank, nearly identical to the storage tanks that are out there now, 135 feet in diameter, 50 feet tall, and 120,000 barrels' storage capacity. The planned expansions are what's triggering the conditional use permit at this time. As illegally non-conforming, they're required to obtain this conditional use permit prior to submitting or approving their building permits for either of these projects, so this is a proactive step on their part, to come into compliance with the land use requirement so that they can move forward with these two projects. This is a visual representation of the projects. The image on the top of the screen shows the location for the proposed future additional storage tank, and then the image on the bottom shows the equipment and accessory structures for the butane project. Again, butane tanks located adjacent to existing tanks with overhead piping in the existing pipe racks. In terms of regulating agencies for this operation, the Colorado Department of Public and Health and Environment regulates this through the Air Pollution Control Division, as well as the Water Quality Control Division. They're also regulated by the Environmental Protection Agency and the Federal Department of Transportation through the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration, as well as the Federal Railroad Administration. In terms of environmental safety, the site is required to comply with a variety of rules and regulations at both the state and federal level. The list is provided there. In terms of personnel and customer safety, Sinclair personnel on the site are required to be hazardous operations and emergency response certified. They're required to take internet-based tests throughout the year in order to stay current on those requirements. The site is also posted with emergency evacuation plans, showing the quickest routes of evacuation, fire extinguisher locations, iWatch stations, et cetera. In terms of customer safety, prior to entering the facility, each individual is required to take a training course that includes lessons, videos, and a test that they have to pass before they will actually get their card to enter the facility. And then, the equipment that is on site is fully automated equipment, computer monitored, could be shut off if necessary. In terms of analysis of the request, it was important for the planning commission to keep in mind that for 43 of the 50 years of existence, that this site was located in unincorporated Adams County, developed to Adams County standards at that time, and was just recently annexed into the city, that this request would bring the property into compliance with the Land Development Code, and that the operations have continually been compliant with relevant requirements for both the state and federal level, and that the site is clean and facilitates safe operations. In the review of the application, it was critical for the development review team to get feedback from two agencies, the first being Tri-County Health Department, who responded that their staff reviewed the application for compliance with the applicable environmental and public health regulations, and that they had no comments. And the second was the Fire District, who responded that the Sinclair Terminal runs an extremely clean facility, uses various types of fire protection for the products in which they dispense and carry, that they've been proactive in providing the Fire Department with information on how they operate, that they're up to date with all their fire safety inspection and they've had no violations, that they have no issue with the proposed butane operation, and that they're working with Sinclair closely to provide all of the required information. In terms of contact from the public, to date, staff has not been contacted by anyone from the public regarding this request. On June 3rd of this year, the planning commission voted unanimously, five to nothing, to recommend approval for this request, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. And that would conclude the staff portion of the presentation this evening. However, we certainly are available for any questions council may have.
First, I'd like to ask council, do you have any questions of the staff at this time concerning this conditional use permit? Seeing none, I'd like to invite the applicant forward if they have any further additional comments to make.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Ms. Shannon Walsh, on behalf of Sinclair.
Is it on?
It might just be too short.
There you go.
That's perfect, I appreciate it. Thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I don't have any specific additional comments, but I do want to thank you all for your time this evening and for your consideration of our conditional use permits submittal. We really appreciate it, and as Paul had explained, you know, our intent is to become legal and to conform with Commerce City's Land Development Code and zoning regulations. So if any member of city council, or yourself, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them as adequately as I can.
Okay, is there any questions or comments for the applicant from the council? And I do see that there are a few. I'll start with Mr. Douglas.
Hello, thank you for being here. I had a question about security. What type of security do you have?
Our entire facility is contained by a chain-link fence with a three-wired barbed wire on top of it. The only entrance and exit points of our facility are through an automated gate system. Our customers, our truck drivers, they have a beeper, a little fob key, so to speak, that enables the gate to open as we do run 24 hours a day when Sinclair personnel may not be on site.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Teter.
Yes, thank you for coming forward tonight for your presentation. I did take the time to go down and talk to the Fire Department about your operation, and it says here in the memo tonight here, they also did agree with what you said about how clean your project is and how well-run it is, and they're extremely happy with the way you do business down there.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that.
Seeing no one further. Seeing no one further, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the findings of the Planning Commission. Mr. McElDowney.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the facts and findings of the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Amador.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings of the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion concerning the conditional use permit. Mr. Amador.
Move to approve conditional use permit CU-105-104 for petroleum storage.
Thank you. Now I need a second. Mr. Teter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Conditional Use Permit for the Operation of Petroleum Storage Facility in Case Number CU-105-14."
Thank you. Title's been read. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you, folks, for coming in tonight. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Resolutions. Resolution 2014-74. Anyone on council have questions regarding this resolution? I'm open for a motion. Mr. McElDowney.
Sorry, I didn't speak quickly enough. I know the chief's here. Would it be appropriate to have the chief make a couple of comments on this, just for the public benefit?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of our City Council. About three months ago, Chief Blackhurst and I spoke with you all during a planning session about the notion that we were looking into the possibility of merging our two victim services units. And at the time we made that presentation to you, I really didn't know the details of how that would all work out. And what you have before you this evening is an IGA that would outline combining the victim services unit from Commerce City with the victim services unit from the city of Brighton. And I can tell you that we've worked long and hard on this IGA. There were, at times, some differences of opinion about how to administer these services, and in particular, the notion that at some point in the future, our employees would become employees of the city of Brighton, and this would infect two of our employees. They certainly believe that that is in the best interest of supervising a unit, and I can see those issues. We explored a variety of alternatives along the way, and at the end of the day, I do believe this is in the best interest of our community and the best interest of our victims who are in our community and in Brighton. Combined services for victim services is not a new thing in our county. There are other communities within Adams County that have been doing this for a very long time, and they, too, are combined employees of one organization, so it does follow the model that we've seen in other places. In an effort to allow our employees to adapt to that transition, we set that date out in 2016. So for the remainder of 2014, for all of 2015, our employees would remain our employees. Now, they are probably more than likely to be assigned in Brighton as we begin to do some cross-training and get people accustomed to working in both cities as we move forward. And so I think that those processes are already taking place in some regards with respect to some cross-training. But the transition from them becoming Commerce City employees, them becoming Brighton employees, wouldn't happen until January 1 of 2016. In terms of the whys we're doing this, just to really quickly encapsulate those for you, number one, I think there was a significant opportunity I was presented with to take a look at these services that we provide to victims in our community and to really enhance our service delivery model. And by working with the city of Brighton, who had been doing a fantastic job of delivering these services, I really think we can capitalize on their experiences, their supervision in that regard. I also think, based on our conversations with some of the grant funding sources that are available in the county, that it is very likely that requests for future personnel will be looked on very favorably by those funding sources. And Chief Blackhurst and I are very much trying to pursue two additional FTEs to be added to this unit. Those FTEs would allow us to have full-time, paid staff, fully-trained staff responding in the field to serving victims, as opposed to our dedicated and tireless volunteers who do that on a day-to-day basis for us today. We would still maintain our volunteer program, and Brighton will maintain theirs. They will become joint, just like our employees are. But it's our hope to transition them to providing vacation coverage, relief, and a lot of follow-up services, as opposed to the day-to-day direct delivery of services in the field. And I think that Chief Blackhurst and I both believe that's a significant increase in the service levels that we'll be providing in both communities as a result of coming together. So with that said, I would answer any questions the council may have with respect to this IGA.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the chief concerning this resolution? I have one comment. Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking, because I got people wanting to do other things, so it's tough, because this thing lights up for all different reasons. J.D.
Chief, thanks for coming and thanks for running us through. I just have a question on this.
See, that's where I get nuts, right?
Where did I have it? Liability and insurance. These employees will actually be Brighton employees in a year, so do we have to carry the workroom compensation on them after that, or?
No, the insurance provisions that are laid out here under Section 3 in Unit Personnel are related to our arrangement between now and 2016. When the employees transition to Brighton, we will begin receiving those services under a contract services basis, and we will actually bring you back a new IGA for the formation of those services.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Teter.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Some of the meetings we've been to the last couple of weeks, we did hear a comment about possibly moving the Human Services Building away from Colorado Boulevard, so you may check into that and see where that's going as far as where our people will be located in the future.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Chief. Now, this is just for the shared victim services unit, correct?
That's correct.
Only?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I just wanted to tell you I applaud you for the efforts of working with Brighton to enhance services in Commerce City. I don't believe our relationships have ever been as good as they are now with our bordering communities, and we need to rely upon each other to keep the cost down for the residents within our community and to be able to provide better service. So for that, thank you, and thanks to Chief Blackhurst as well.
Thanks, sir.
I'm open for a motion, Mr. McElDowney.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And first, I would just thank the chief for letting me put you on the spot. That was exactly what we wanted to hear, and I appreciate you running through those details, and I echo the mayor's kudos, so thank you. That said, I would move for approval of Resolution 2014-74.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Bullock.
A second, Nat.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "For Resolution 2014-74, Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Brighton to Establish a Shared Victim Services Unit." And I might point out that in the resolution, the word "victim" is correctly spelled. It's just an error on the screen.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. On to Resolution 2014-75. Is there anyone on council who would like, has questions on this resolution? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this resolution? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce Resolution 2014-75.
Thank you. Mr. Mc- Not introduce, approve. Approve. Mr. McElDowney.
I'll second the motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution Appointing Members to the City of Commerce City Permanent Arbitration Panel."
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I have, next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. Is there anyone on council who has questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. Douglas?
No.
No? No, Mr. Bullock?
I have a free introduction.
All right, because the lights are on. That's why, it confuses me, because if I'm asking for questions and if I got people waiting to make a motion. So with that, before I allow you to make a motion, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce ordinance 2014. Council is seated.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. McElDowney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2014 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the Recognition of the Kaiser Permante Walk and Bike to Work Grant Funds in the Amount of $7,395 for the Support of the City of Commerce City Wellness Committee and the Authorization of the Expenditure thereof."
I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Good call, Mr. Mayor Protem. That's why you're the mayor, Protem. That one time in history. All right. Let the record show that the ordinance is introduced unanimously by the council this evening. That takes us on to presentations, and tonight we have a presentation from the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, Mr. David Lucas. Please come forward.
Name's David Lucas, from the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. We appreciate your time this evening. I am going to pass immediately to Mr. Bernardo Garza, who is the lead planner for our master plan, and then he's going to give you a presentation here, and then he will toss it back to me for questions. But before that, I want to definitely thank Commerce City and your staff. They've been extremely active in this process. Carolyn, Tracy, Chris, Jenny, you name it. Everybody on your staff has been very helpful and fully engaged, and I think has made us, put us in a better place. So we will try to keep this brief, but ask all the questions that you like. Thank you. Bernardo.
Good evening. And once again, my name is Bernardo Garza. I am a planner with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and it is my job to help the staff of the refuge and also our partners of the city and other partners in developing this comprehensive conservation plan for the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. And this evening, we would just like to bring to you an update of where we are in the planning process for this comprehensive conservation plan. So, Chris, if you would. So, last year, during the summer of 2013, we began the planning process for the CCP. We began by forming a planning team composed of members of Commerce City, City of Denver, DIA, and other cooperators. During the summer, we also held some public meetings in the vicinity of the refuge to scope for issues, both internally and from the public. In the fall and winter of 2013, we gathered as a planning team to develop a draft vision and a set of goals for this comprehensive conservation plan. And in the spring of this year, we began analyzing and developing alternatives, a set of alternatives, on how to manage this refuge. At this time, during the summer of this year, we are engaged in developing a draft plan, which we hope we can have a final plan by this time next year. Next, Chris? So during scoping, we received a great deal of comments, but which we were able to summarize in these points that you can see here. People, during the scoping meetings, they told us that they wanted us to seize opportunity to connect people to the refuge, to provide more outreach to the surrounding communities, to set clear expectations of what people can expect when they come and visit the refuge, and expectations of what a national wildlife refuge is. To make sure that we preserve the sense of retreat in the refuge, that we work with partners such as yourselves, to preserve the site's history and interpret it, to do everything we can to improve and expand the visitor experience at the refuge, and also to improve access and transportation systems in the refuge. Chris? To that end, our planning team has developed nine goals that we aim to reach as the purpose of this refuge. So we have a habitat management goal, wildlife goal, a visitor services goal, communications and outreach, research and science, cultural resources, partnerships, infrastructure and operations, and access and transportation. These goals set the stage or the aims of the planning team for this refuge. So to that end, we have developed four draft alternatives that we will be speaking shortly here. Alternative A is always in all of our Fish and Wildlife documents, is the no-action alternative. In other words, continue managing the refuge as we have been doing it up to this time. We have developed three other action alternatives. Alternative B being traditional refuge, C, an urban refuge, and alternative D, a gateway refuge, and I will go into further detail in the next slides. So under alternative B, we would propose to manage the refuge as we do with many other refuges that are outside of urban areas. There is limited access, and really, the priority in the management scheme of the refuge is towards wildlife. Visitor services receive just a minimum expansion, and so does access to the refuge. Next. Under alternative C, which currently is our proposed action, we would greatly expand access to the refuge, the same as opportunities for the visitors to engage in what we, in the Fish and Wildlife Service, call the Big Six, public uses, mainly fishing, wildlife observation, wildlife photography, interpretation, environmental education, and to some degree in hunting, perhaps hunting education at the wildlife refuge. Next. This is a map, and we brought some copies that we would like to provide to all the members of the council of what- the members of the, of the council, of what the alternative C would look like. It, it shows where the, the new access points to refuge would be. It shows also the new configuration that we propose for the fence, and some other features that we will go into a little bit more detail later. Under alternative D, which we, we call the gateway refuge, we would propose to engage with conservation groups and other commercial ventures to be able to expand the programming at the wildlife refuge. This alternative also seeks to ensure that this wildlife refuge is thoroughly connected to local and regional trail systems throughout the Front Range of Colorado. What are some of the main features of the proposed action? Well, we would, for one thing, we would consider renaming the refuge complex of which the arsenal is part of. David and his staff manage not only the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, but they also manage another two refuges, two ponds in Nevada and the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge in the border between Jefferson County and Boulder. Altogether are called the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge Complex, and we feel that this, this name doesn't really convey the, the wholeness of, of this complex. So one of the ideas that we have is perhaps to look at a different name for the complex, not for the refuge. Under this alternative, we also propose to reintroduce the black-footed ferret, which is a native species to Colorado, to connect the refuge to the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail Network, to co-manage some lands on the eastern side of the, of the refuge with, with some of our land management partners, to significantly expand the recreational opportunities at the refuge, create additional access for pedestrians and for bicyclists, to work with partners to cross-promote the refuge on a regional basis, and also with other partners such as RTD, to try to simplify transportation access to, to people from all over the Front Range of Colorado, not only to our neighbors in Commerce City and Denver. We also propose to develop a new, more inviting, better-looking fencing and, and gateway to the refuge, so it's, looks less threatening and more friendly, and we would seek ways to improve the refuge's transportation system and facilities. And finally, we just wanted to, once again, reiterate what is in the future for this planning process. So between June and October, we're in the process of developing a draft plan. This plan will be reviewed by all of our partners, including Commerce City, before we go to the public. We would like to have a public draft CCP sometime around November of this year, and after we have gone public for a couple of months, we will hold public meetings throughout different venues in the City of Commerce City and Denver and Montbello and other areas to solicit comments on the draft plan, and we hope that we can have a final plan and begin implementing the final CCP during the summer of 2015. Thank you. And with that, I, I would ask David.
Are you able to receive these right now? Okay. Okay. Do you want to hand them out? All right, well, I appreciate Bernardo doing that. Bernardo's and Tony and our whole planning team have been instrumental in putting together where we are right now. But before I get started, how cool is the world across?
Yeah. Are you excited? Tomorrow night's the big thing.
Yeah, I'm excited about tomorrow's shindig, and then, I mean, I'm just amazed that it's kind of taken off. It's pretty cool. And I, I really didn't know that it was like the World Cup. It's great that it happens kind of right at the same time, because I didn't know they did it every four years across the world. I thought it was a little newer than this, and it's pretty darn neat. So with that, I figured we would, if Chris could maybe even go back to the map, it might be the easiest place when people have questions, I'm guessing, and then kind of go through any questions that you have. But also, just let me explain really quick the, the roles of everybody in this process. So as a governmental entity and a member of our planning team, Commerce City can provide comments to us at any time, not just through the public comment process. Our goal and our aim, as Bernardo said, is to receive and get everything in working order before we go public, because I would much prefer that Commerce City, City of Denver, DIA, everybody is aligned on a public plan when we go out to the public. I think it's kind of our diligence as public employees to, to do that. So we would like to get your comments frequently, as needed, probably through Chris and other, Brian and Jim, whoever else. We hear from all these guys pretty frequently. So with that, what kind of stuff is on your mind?
All right, I'm going to open it up to, to questions or comments from the council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one quick item onto that. Staff is scheduled to bring a potential draft comment letter for this process to you on the 28th. So this is really, given that that's a study session format, and we have an outside presentation tonight was the better forum for them to be able to come and present the progress update thus far, but we are intending to bring a potential comment letter to City Council on the 28th.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll start with Mr. Bullock.
Thank you, David.
Don't know why I did that, but could you expand a little bit more on pedestrian gates that you're proposing to put there, and the new alignment of the fence, because that's going to be the most dynamic part of this, you know, how people enter and with the Rocky Mountain Refuge. So could you talk about that?
Certainly, Renee. Oops, I'm not back on. I'm on? Okay. So, transportation and access to the refuge was one of the, the principal things we talked about early on. Number one, the Refuge Act prohibits any through roads through the refuge, which is helpful, because we also are very concerned that any roads that went through the refuge would logically become cut, cutways for folks trying to get to the airport quicker or wherever, Reunion quicker. So we ended up coming up with sort of a bureaucratic terminology, but we kind of translate that into the map, but we came up with tier one, tier two, and tier three access points. There's only one tier one access point, which is the main entrance to the refuge through Prairie Parkway. So that is the only way you can drive a vehicle on to the refuge. Then we decided to go do these tier two access points, which are bicycle and pedestrian, which, and a tier two allows you access into the refuge, across the refuge, and then the difference then in a tier three is you're only allowed on to the refuge for a bike-ped trail in a corner. So up by Reunion, you can see up by Henderson Hill, that's a tier three access, because you can access the refuge, get a nice little experience going across a mile or so of trail, but you can't actually get all the way to the interior of the refuge. Versus a tier two, Chris, maybe Highline? Yeah, a tier two where they can come in, park their cars or whatever at the edge of the refuge, ride their bikes to the edge of the refuge, and then access all the way through. So again, that's the main way we dealt with transportation, Renee, was maintaining one major vehicle entrance, avoiding cut-throughs, but then also providing additional bicycle and pedestrian entrance. And then also, what was kind of cool with all this was how to factor in fast tracks. So we're going to have fast tracks on the east side at 60th and Pena, on the south side with Central Park, and on the west side at Highway Two and 72nd, right?
Colorado Boulevard.
Colorado Boulevard, okay. So we have these three fast track stations that are also there, and then Commerce City just got this safe pedestrian grant for all the way along 72nd, and that's-
Safe house to school.
Yep. He's got all the terms, sorry. But that's another cool thing, is that you could, in theory, you could get on the refuge at one of the fast track entrances, go across the refuge, and then get back on to fast tracks and go, go on home that way. So it's not, everything's not just in and out. You could actually go clear across the refuge through, from the DIA fast tracks, go through Commerce City, get on to fast tracks and go home. So we felt like that was a pretty cool part of intermodal transportation, that we needed to factor into that. So again, I think the big difference transportation, there's one main entrance, Prairie Parkway, additional bike-ped entrances at several locations, and then one of the things the planning team really wanted to see was quite a few of these tier three kind of access points where folks from the community can quickly access the refuge, enjoy those amenities. And then, well, I guess, to make sure it's clear, the big limiting factor with some of these is bison. So wherever we have bison, we have currently kept people in their cars. So that created quite a planning challenge if you're not allowing cars to drive through, right? So some of these tier threes are kind of limited on the fact that there's bison nearby. I mean, that makes it great for the tier three, but at the same time, it kind of pinches them into a corner where they can't get into the bison area, but, does that make any sense? Sean? Okay. And then your second question was fencing. So one of the, we, we contracted with several organizations, did lots of public meetings and outreach, I think you participated on one, with trying to understand why some of our neighbors aren't coming to the refuge. And there's a lot of barriers, perceived and non-perceived, some real hard barriers and some more historic and cultural. So one thing we could attack is the hard boundaries that are, that people are, and the hard barriers, which a lot of people envision, the eight-foot fence, the military guard shacks, as unwelcoming, and I don't want to go there. I'm not invited there. So we are working on a branding concept that's going to come out in the, sometime between the draft and the final, but it's not that complicated, really. It's a kind of urban ranch appeal, split rail fences, et cetera, to match the bison and our kind of Front Range, Colorado look. So initially, split rail fences are the big change. So that won't keep your bison in, so there'll still be eight-foot fences, but they may be set back, more similar to what you see on Quebec, where this, the large fence is halfway across the section, or quarter of the way across the section, but then you accentuate that with a split rail fence, a more welcoming entrance all the way up to the Prairie Parkway and up to the main gate. Say enough on that?
Two big ones that we've talked about is the one in Commerce City, so Commerce City residents would be able to frankly use this sort of semi-open area here between what amounts to Chambers and Second Creek.
Yep.
And you can see the black fence line, and then there's another one south in Denver, next, close to the fast track station.
Yep. So it takes down that eight-foot fence and then moves that eight-foot fence into that black line, and then you have a traditional split rail fence is kind of marking your boundary. And then 56th Avenue gets improved as 56th Avenue gets enlarged.
And just to comment on that, when we were in those meetings, a lot of our neighbors from Montbello and Green Valley Ranch and everything, they were the ones that were saying it didn't seem like it was inviting to them, because they had to come all the way around to Prairie View, to Parkway, to get in on to the arsenal. So those pedestrian and bicycle gates that are going to be along that way gives them access to it, but they, we hope they don't get run over by the bison.
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, it adds a lot of distance. So I mean, if you take somebody in Reunion and you count those little hash marks with your section lines, right? That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 hash marks all the way around to the main entrance, and then 11 hash marks all the way back around. So if you're not in a car, that's pretty difficult, number one. If you're a young person on a bicycle, that's pretty difficult. Same thing if you're in Green Valley Ranches, Ranch, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Seven to eight in. So it, it really does provide quite a bit more access without kind of compromising some of those key ideals that we were trying to hold on to.
All right, Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Dave, for your presentation. Very interesting. I have a little off-the-wall question, and I assure you, I know you got the answer. I'm just kind of curious what's going on with the dam from the Montbello runoff water.
Okay, yeah, the Havana Pond Dam. So that's the one that breached in September last year. Currently, it was funded by, it was accepted by FEMA. So FEMA provided $750,000 to urban drainage and the City of Denver to rebuild that, and they also provided $750,000 for mitigation for improvements, so that it doesn't happen again. So we are meeting again next week, I believe, one of the final design meetings, and they're supposed to begin work September, October to replace it.
All right. Mr. McAldonny?
Again, I'll echo the previous comments. Very exciting. I mean, it's been one of the, the privileges of, since joining the council, watching what's been a very rapid evolution of the, of the refuge complex since I came on versus all of that pre-work that Renee and Sean and others worked through. I, I think that the changes that are, that are highlighted here in, in the Plan C are incredibly exciting, particularly as a cyclist, the, the trails and the ability to bike. I know there are a number of folks who bike-commute-
Yep.
-and are absolutely thrilled, have been thrilled in the past at the prospect of having these bicycle options, and so to see them now take shape on the map, in conjunction with those shifting fence lines, I agree, that's going to have a big impact on the perception of that, of that facility. Again, it just, we've always talked about what an asset this is to the community, and I think this just elevates it to that next level. And, and again, I love the, the black-footed ferret reintroduction. That was something that we heard about in passing during the, the flood damage tours, and the possibility that that was in the offing, and it's, it really neat to see that that would come to pass as well, and again, just further enhance the, the variety of wildlife out there and give them a new, a new foothold here in, in our backyard.
Yeah, the, the ferrets are pretty exciting. Probably our, not necessarily our biggest challenge, our biggest group to work with that was concerned was DIA. And we have heard from DIA and FAA now that they're on quote, Team Ferret, so they're ready to go. Commerce City's always been there on that, and that's exciting, and Denver Parks is rec as well. So that's, it's pretty neat. Obviously, the decision on that one will come with the final decision in the fall of next year, but we're looking forward to it. It's looking, it's looking more possible than it did even a year ago.
And if you can help refresh my memory, does that have a component of the prairie dog management or mitigation? And I don't think you talked about that here so much, but I know we, again, we heard about that a little bit last September in some of the-
Yeah, so we, we did embark on prairie dog management, lethal and non-lethal control. It was necessary. But yes, ferrets, a male ferret eats 100 prairie dogs a year, a female eats 150 prairie dogs a year. So we are hopeful that by doing the work that we've done over the last year plus, year and a half, and then introducing ferrets, there ought to be a little bit of prairie dog synergy that starts to occur, where we don't see quite the dramatic booms and busts that we are seeing right now.
That's great. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Dave, for the update. I'm curious about the fencing for the bison. Are you going to increase that, so there's more available spaces that they can go, so they can roam?
Great question. Yes, we are still currently in the two bison pastures on the left. Our guys are currently building fencing that takes them all, well, Chris, if you could go up to the Basin F, you know where Basin F is?
This one?
One to the left. Yeah, so they're currently coming across there, and then they will go across, all the way across, right there, and they're building that fence right now to bring in the southeast pasture next, so that's an additional 4,600 acres. So that will hopefully be done by this winter, early next year, and then the remaining northern section will probably be another two to three years out because of restoration of the grasslands. So yes, we are, total 12,400 acres for bison eventually.
Wow. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you might, this might be a good opportunity to talk a little bit, because I think council might be interested to know about the possibility of the bison to the east.
Okay, great question.
Because it would be adjacent to Commerce City.
Great question. I hate to trump Mr. Hancock.
Oh, yeah, sorry, am I, am I getting ahead of Denver's comments?
No, but I think on, it is state of the city on July 15th, he's going to announce the partnership for this, so we're a week before, so-
Sorry.
No, but what they are proposed, have proposed and what is underway is Denver Parks and Rec is, entered into an agreement to manage that orange area there, for DIA, for conservation purposes. And then what is proposed is that we would then expand the bison grazing pasture to the east there to allow bison to be viewed off Pena Boulevard, but also that is somewhat mitigation for the acres that we lost of bison grazing by moving the fence further inward to kind of create that connection for Montbello and Green Valley Ranch. So we lost acres there where he's got the cursor, and we're gaining acres to the east. So we're pretty excited about that possibility, too, but lots of legal jargon that they still have to kind of jump through with DIA and FAA, but they're pretty excited about it.
Hopefully, those are aviation-related- Hopefully, those are aviation-related bison as we move forward.
Exactly. They're revenue-producing bison, therefore.
Because otherwise, they cost. Just telling you.
Exactly.
When it's a non-aviation use.
Oh yeah.
It's costly.
Exactly.
We're dealing with that. Mr. Amador?
Thank you, David, for the presentation. Good work. Could you elaborate just a little bit on the northern auto tour trail and the southern auto tour trail, kind of how they're envisioned to work?
Certainly. So again, we have this bison issue of how to get people in bison together. But if, Chris, could you show the southern? That's the one that you all are aware of right now, the traditional one that goes east-west, out and back.
Yep.
Again, that east-west will be picked up with some bicycle pedestrian access, and you will be allowed to ride bicycles, which is a big change. There'll be bike paths and other things there. So that traditional east-west is the southern. So then, that larger hourglass, the northern route, we are currently designing that as a one-way, because fortunately, unfortunately, the road was not constructed wide enough to truly be an FA, federal highways-approved, two-way road. We would have to go out and build more roads, so we don't really want to do that. But it might work kind of slick, and that's what we're trying to figure out, is I believe you start at the bottom, Chris, I believe.
Yeah, and you go.
And you go this way as a one-way. So that's an additional 12-mile loop, which takes you into some areas folks have not been able to access previously. Pretty sizable areas, some of the quietest and most remote areas on the refuges right now. Pretty neat area. So it's a one-way in and out, is the theory. Does that answer the question?
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, Dave. First of all, thanks for the update and coming in, and you know, I'm, I'm excited about this happening. I don't know what the odds of it happening, what you, what the loopholes you have to jump through at the federal level are to get this done. One of the questions I had was the naming. Do you have an idea of what these facilities will be named?
Very good question, and I had a darn good idea you would ask that question, therefore. This came out of the planning team. Renaming the refuge is, my understanding, has been a very, very controversial thing, and that is not our intention. The Rocky Mountain Arsenal is what this site was, and the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge is what this place will remain. So, but the challenge is, everything in our nomenclature, all of our folks that think of us in Washington headquarters, wherever, think of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, but we are bigger than that. We are rocky flats, two ponds, and we are easements up, yeah, we got a storm coming in. But Fort Collins along the Platt River. So, I don't know if we actually ever talked about names, Chris. It was just a concept. I mean, to me, anything along the lines of the Front Range seems to make sense because we do have things from the mountains all the way out to the prairies. We generally try to keep them somewhat geographically noted. We can't be the Colorado refuges because we have refuges in North Park and in Stan Lewis Valley and northwest Colorado. I can assure you, we will not be the Denver Metropolitan Wildlife Refuge that was proposed in the 80s. So, but I don't know. That's just one question. So I'm not sure how, I don't think we normally have done naming competitions or anything like that, but.
I don't know why they're all tied together like that.
Yeah.
Doesn't make much sense.
It's difficult administratively, because you go over there and you deal with West Metro Fire, and you start saying you're from the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, and they say, well, you're 40 miles away. What are you doing here? Well, we're here because of the flats. It is, it is a cumbersome kind of thing. And then, and then we also get, I will tell you, we get, probably on a weekly basis, we get somebody who asks us if this site is radioactive.
I'm sure.
Because they confuse it with the flats. So it, I think it is a challenging thing that we want to remedy, but I don't think we have a name yet in mind.
I do, too. Yeah, we've struggled with the potential changes for names in the past of the refuge. So, we'll let you handle that. It sounds like you got a good handle on it. And I do know these access points will be great for some of the organizations that want to be able to access by foot or by bike. Elk Environmental Learning for Kids has, has been, been really on me for years about making it accessible through the Montbello area to help educate their students. So, I think that's a good move. I really appreciate the update.
Okay.
And if there are no other questions, thank you, and we'll send you off in the storm.
All right, guys. You have a wonderful evening, and thank you very much.
And we'll see you tomorrow.
Oh yeah, we'll see you tomorrow night.
Should be pretty interesting.
Yes, we'll see you tomorrow night.
Great. Thanks, Dave.
Can she open the curtains so we can?
Yeah, would you like to open those curtains so we could all watch the light show while we're finishing? All right, with that, we'll move into the next item of business, is the administrative council business portion of the meeting. Are there any council members that have any administrative council business they'd like to bring forward? Mr. Douglas?
You know, when we passed, when we asked our residents to weigh in on the 1% sales tax, and it passed, of course, and we're very thankful for that, and then we looked at different scenarios as far as low bid and all that. Seeing that the problems we are having on 104th with, we do have, where they come back and have to redo something, whatever, and it's a painstaking task of getting that done, we're past the point where now it's our problem. I believe that instead of going for the low bid with these contracts, we should go for best value. That way, we're ensured that we have quality work and that better lifespan of the project and not having to come back and redo something, or where it's on us and then we're stuck with that. So, I would like to see that we go for best value instead of lowest bid, because you have quality, more professionals out there doing the work, and you have quality work, and I, you know, with this pipeline going, and yeah, I was not happy throughout that XL chose, and it's already been said and done and all that, but the people they have working on that pipeline are professionals and making sure that there's quality in the There's trade unions and all that are doing a lot of that work there, and so you, you would have quality product for life, and that means a lot to us with that 1%. And not only with the best value, let me see how this plays out, too, that with that 1% covering operation and maintenance, that we look at our employees, more of a raising up the minimum wage, maybe, or even a, a living wage. But I would, would like to see this council, if we could go forward with these contracts with the 1%, going for best value, so the lowest bid. That was one thing. The other thing I have here is our water shedding projects, you know, we have storm drain, and we're looking at making sure we, we manage those projects and other developers who have storm drains in their, in their development. What's the protocol as far as keeping those areas of weed-free and all that, maybe having something, vegetation that's meant for those waterways? So there's not a collection of trash, or are trees growing in the wrong way? Because that's going to disturb the flow of water, you know, it's meant, it's meant to keep that water flowing and not clogging up the system. So, is there, is there a maintenance sort of scenario as far as management to making sure that not only Commerce City is following those rules of keeping that watershed area clear, but everyone else throughout the Commerce City area?
Mr. Douglas, that's a, that's a very good question. I know we have maintenance requirements for the city's storm drainage facilities. Folks who install private storm drainage facilities in neighborhoods are also required to maintain them. We can get some additional detail and provide that back to city councils part of an upcoming city manager update.
Okay. And then this Russian thistle we have that end up being tumbleweeds. Is there any way we could try to see if we can, those things can be cut down, because they're going to be a big problem come this fall, blowing down the, our streets and everything? Because, you know, I know homeowners don't, don't grow Russian, Russian thistle in their backyards, so the tumbleweeds aren't coming from property owners, they're coming from land developers and all that have huge amount of land. Maybe some way we could start some sort of program that could alleviate some of these tumbleweed problems we're having?
We could also provide some information about the city's weed ordinance. It doesn't necessarily require that entire properties be mowed, especially once they're over a certain size, but we can provide that information back to city council, and that could be the basis of some discussion of what our weed regulations are.
Okay, thank you.
And on that note, Steve, the Russian thistle, it doesn't dry out and blow away like a tumbleweed, it's just a big noxious weed that actually is prohibited by the state for noxious weeds. You're supposed to, by law, have to take care of those. And I noticed along Highway 2, there are a lot of Russian thistles. I know we mowed them a few years back when we got a complaint from Mr. Murray. However, I think they need to be sprayed so they don't continue to spread. The problem is, by the time we catch up with them, they've seeded out and they're causing a problem. I noticed this year, for some reason, a lot of Russian thistle, I got Russian thistle trying to come up in my yard. And they're really hard to get rid of, they're, they're a noxious weed based on the state. So wherever we, we have them in our rights of way, up to and including that Highway 2 corridor, see if we can get them sprayed and killed so that they won't come back up next year before we mow them, so that they're dead. I know Rick brought it up to me today. He said there's some up by Reunion, some areas, along Highway 2, but it's that, it's that tall thistle that has the big purple flowers on it, and they're, they're a terrible, a terrible weed, and that's why the state has prohibited them. They're, they're not, they're, they're not normally in this environment. They were brought over here, and they're, they're a noxious situation. So we want to try to, try to control that. I just noticed that this year, there's a lot more of them than before. And as well, talking to Mr. Murray, one of our only farmers left in the city, there was a lot of, a certain kind of mustard weed that turns into tumbleweeds, and he said, based on some of the fields around where he farms, primarily up around the golf course area, that there's going to be a lot of that, that literally will plug up roads and things like that because of the amount of tumbleweeds it'll cause. I think those are the weeds you're talking about. But we need to make sure that we have our horticulturists or whatever they are looking at the weed scenario so as that we don't have a problem later in the year because we didn't take care of the, the need early on.
Right. And I said one more thing. You know, our registration for cars, we, there's bridge and road fees. And I'm going to look into this as well with E470, but there's a, a small E next to road fees. I'm not sure if that, if that's part of E470 or if that's a mission. Because I know, based on what the county wants to give to different cities, we do get some sort of road fee and bridge fees coming back to the city. So I was wondering though, how's that supported from our driver's vehicle registration?
Are you referring to the revenue sources that Mr. Tinklinberg mentioned last week? What's the original source of those funds?
Correct.
We can provide that information to you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things, actually. I just need to reconfirm from earlier this year that I resigned my position on the police pension board due to schedule conflicts. And so, just want to reiterate that Councilmember Douglas is, actually, was appointed as the primary council liaison for that board, and I believe Rick Teeter and myself were, I was probably maybe the third or the second alternate on that board. I just wanted to reiterate that because I actually have been getting, in fact, I just received an email today confirming, and it shows on the minutes that I'm absent, and I really want to make sure that we clarify that.
Mr. Geller, you want to address that real quick?
Yes, I, to, to correct that misconception, because I talked to Councilwoman Elliott earlier this evening, and it was her intent to resign, but the minutes don't accurately reflect that. And she does work during the day, and those police pension meetings are always held during the day, so that's a real problem. So, what has been suggested in discussing this with Councilwoman Teeter and also Councilwoman Douglas, is that if Councilwoman Elliott resigns this evening, to make the record clear, then Councilwoman Douglas is agreeable to being appointed as the regular appointee to the police pension board, and Councilwoman Teeter would be the alternate.
Okay. Do you want us to?
And that would be a motion that I would suggest if, if we have Councilwoman Elliott's consent.
All right, Councilwoman Elliott, you wish to resign from that board?
That's correct.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the resignation? Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the resignation of Councilwoman Elliott from the police pension board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And now, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Douglas as the acting member of the police pension board?
Yeah, and you can, if you wish, appoint. Councilwoman Teeter in the same motion as an alternate.
All right, so I need a motion to appoint Councilwoman Douglas as the member, Councilwoman Teeter as the alternate.
So moved.
Is there a second? I have a second by Mr. Macaldonie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now with that, Councilwoman Elliott, let me ask you, I know another daytime meeting, and, and right now, I really need some support on this particular board. I didn't know if you wanted to stay on it, was the Water Commission.
Right, and actually, Councilmember Macaldonie and I were just discussing that. This last meeting, it wasn't on my calendar in enough time for me to be able to request the time off.
All right, but you want, you want to stay on that?
I would like to, but I think maybe we can discuss it a little more.
Okay, yeah, because right now, I end up, I end up being there by myself.
Right.
And right now, we've got some pretty serious.
Right.
Messages to get across to South Adams, and I just need some support. So if you can't be there, I at least need an alternate that can be there.
Certainly.
Okay? So you guys can discuss that, and we'll, we'll take it up at a, at a future meeting, but just bring it back to my attention.
No, definitely, that's, that's on my, on my list.
Go ahead, and go ahead and go through the rest of this.
Okay, so I have some more things. I've been approached by several residents in the northern area, approximately Turnberry neighborhood, where the 104th Avenue, 104th and Revere, where it turns into Turnberry, and then there's, you've got the RTD parking right on the south side of 104th Avenue. And I've actually witnessed this over the last few weeks, tremendous amount of pedestrian traffic that are trying to attempt crossing that area, and I'm sure this might maybe have been brought up before, but I've been approached enough to where I really felt like I needed to address that this evening. But they're trying to cross this busy street, and there's not any type of traffic calming device in place, and it's, it's actually pretty dangerous. It was actually pretty scary this weekend, and even fact that it was a holiday weekend, and not many people are attempting to catch the bus on a holiday weekend, but even just a few times during the week, early morning commuters, it's, it's a very dangerous area. So I would like to see if it, if at all possible, some type of a, a traffic study to kind of monitor the traffic, the pedestrian traffic both ways, and maybe see if that's something that could be considered for a traffic calming device, whether it be a, a light. And I know that might be a little bit difficult because you have traffic that's going to be traveling off of 104th, I'm, excuse me, off of Highway 85, and right as you're passing the church, it's an immediate stop. So I don't know how that works as far as engineering purposes, but I really would like for someone to, to look into that.
Before you move on, I think Mr. Macaldonie has a comment on that item.
Thank you, and I've observed same. I, I think part of the, the increasing, part of what we're seeing in terms of the reason for the increase is the use of the 104X route.
Right, correct.
The other thing that we notice, I, I notice is that the parking lot for the retail operation at Turnberry Marketplace becomes a sort of fall, failover.
Right.
Parking lot for riders on that route. And it's a mix of folks that are taking the 104X downtown, as well as folks that are taking the Sky Ride out to DIA. You see a lot of employee traffic, lots of TSA uniforms at that bus stop. that bus stop at rush hour, or all hours of the day, given the shift changes. But I agree, I think that that intersection is actually designed for a future light, but there's not any flow south of 104th at this point, so that probably has an impact.
I guess, let me ask this of Mr. Hayes, moving forward with the, I guess, I guess the positive nature of how the parking ride is working along there, and how well the 104 has advanced, the fact that we're going to be adding more buses, is RTD have any responsibility in working with us to have a safe access for those people, and enough parking in the parking ride so that we're not impacting the Turnberry shopping complex? I need somebody to, and if that takes a study to figure out, but I just want to know, is that all on Commerce City, or is part of that on RTD? And I would imagine the size of the parking facility, if it's benefiting RTD, they would want to expand, and can they? Just some of the questions that I have about this entire thing.
Well, I can comment on the second item first, definitely they are responsible for parking, and providing adequate parking on their site. I'm not sure if they have room to expand that or not. I would say secondarily, on the access for pedestrians, it probably is primarily our responsibility, but absolutely, we can work with RTD to come up with some solutions for that intersection. And I agree with Councilmember McElhany, I think that is planned for a signal at some point, but it would meet the warrants at this point, but we definitely need to do something to improve the pedestrian safety component with that parking ride.
I agree. Now, currently at this time, is there a pedestrian crossing at 104th and Highway Two? On that east side?
There should be.
That's what I'm thinking, there should be. And are they not wanting to go down and use the crossing, and therefore are crossing in an unsafe area on their own regard, even though there's a crossing within proximity, until that light comes into play?
That's a very likely scenario, that people are going to take the path of least resistance as opposed to walking maybe an extra half mile out of their way.
Well, my thought behind it is, is there a safe crossing for them within a proximity that they could utilize, so that we know we're providing a safe crossing? Because if there's not one, it becomes more of an immediate issue for me.
I think, Mr. Mayor, the only place that you have that's controlled, and I don't know that it is necessarily safe by our definition, would be 104th and Highway Two.
Right.
It's actually probably safer to cross Highway Two than it is to cross 104th because of the size of that intersection, and the fact that you have that protected right turn to head east. But that's the only place that you have any sort of controlled...
There is a controlled crossing.
There is a controlled crossing there, but that's it, until you go well east of that.
Right, and I don't know what those distances are by the manual on uniform traffic control devices, how far away does it denote that another crossing needs to go in?
That another would need to be there, right.
Right, plus with that right-hand turn there, it is a dangerous scenario at Highway Two and 104th. I was just wondering if we're providing some form of a crossing, and whether it's within the approximate distance from the need.
I agree, just one last comment before I throw it back to staff. The other observation is, not just trying to cross the intersection, but literally I've observed median hopping. So not even crossing at a road, an intersection that you might expect to see a pedestrian, but literally hanging out on the median and then, you know, racing between cars. So I think those are...
Right, and that's exactly what I've witnessed.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and I think, what I will do is turn it over to staff to investigate it. And at minimum, we need to maybe during the high points, have an officer out there trying to make sure that, you know, look at what we can do from a jaywalking concern.
First of all, staff will absolutely take a look at it. The situation in terms of pedestrian safety is getting worse as more pedestrians cross. Looks like there is a painted crosswalk at 104th and Revere, so by installing the painted crosswalk, it seems as if we're encouraging folks to cross there, even though it's not a signalized intersection. That's why they're not going down to 104th and Highway Two. But the best thing to do is give us an opportunity to study it.
All right.
Certainly, thank you.
That one's in staff's hands. Do you have another one?
Yes, so adding on to that, yesterday...
Just one second, Steve, did you have something to add to that item?
I know further down towards Cummings, they're in the design work to have an underpass for pedestrians to go underneath 104th, right?
I think that's the ditch that'll allow access underneath.
Is that ditch or pedestrian?
It'll be for pedestrian access, but it's where the road will cross the O'Brien Canal.
Okay, because...
And they need that for maintenance and tie-in door trail system.
All right.
So it's not a separate pedestrian underpass that's going in there.
Okay, answered my question, thanks.
All right, Crystal, go ahead and continue.
Okay, so with that, no, that's fine, thank you. So with that, yesterday afternoon, it was about 3:30 in the afternoon, and I witnessed the train stopped, and there was one car that was blocking a portion of the highway, or excuse me, 104th, so there were actually, it was a fire truck, and there was another, you wouldn't know the name of the truck, the water, the tank truck, I forget, anyway, they were trying to cross, and they sat there. And I just happened to turn right off, so I parked in the parking lot, playing, you know, citizens' arrest here, just to see what was going on, and that train was stopped for a good 10 minutes before it finally started to slowly move. But I thought it was just ironic that that one car was blocking just a portion of the intersection, the two emergency vehicles ended up turning around and trying to go, attempted to go south on Highway 85 to maybe try to catch the next light. But I just wanted to know, I know we've had some issues in the past that we've discussed about the train stopping for no apparent reason, this one was really bothersome because they were trying to respond to a call, and I'm hoping that that's not the same scenario that we've had a few weeks ago, so...
One thing that was discussed last week, was actually a suggestion that came up from resident property owner Glenn Murray. The railroads have both encouraged folks that are impacted by train stopping and blocking the intersection to contact them, they've given us phone numbers to call. We are in the process of fabricating signs that we can install. But the intersections where it seems to be the biggest problem on both lines, the intersections aren't the same, for example, the UP and 104th is a problem, but the Burlington Northern and 104th doesn't seem to be as big a problem. So we're trying to take a look at the intersections where it seems to be the biggest problem, install signs that give motorists a phone number to call if they're having a problem that gets that comment going directly to the railroads. But the problem you're speaking of the other day, we can give that feedback back to the railroad, you're speaking of the 104th crossing with the UP closer to Highway 85?
Correct, correct, and these vehicles were traveling west on 104th.
And to add to that one, today, I noticed about 3:30 on the UP down at 112th and Highway 85, is that the UP?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Over a half an hour, train was crossed, crossed 112th. And sometimes they're there for four or five hours, and so people start navigating around it. With the construction on 104th, it really messed up, and I made, I don't know if I made a mistake, I should have probably went up to 120th, because when I went down Havana to jump on 104th, it was really backed up because of the construction traffic, and everybody that's trying to use 112th is diverting up Havana to 104th, and it really was causing a mess. So we have to do something about the trains. What I would ask, because I will not be going on the train trip on the, is it the 17th?
17th.
On the 17th. But the UP, the manager for that port of the UP, he's out of La Salle, and it goes from basically Denver to Greeley, Cheyenne area, and he'll be on the train. And last year, when I was on it, I told him, we're having these problems. That's when I brought the number back for staff, for a contact, when these crossings are being blocked. I don't know which council members are going to attend that, where you ride the bus to Cheyenne and bring the train back, but he should be getting on, and give you an opportunity on the train to have a meeting, and whoever is going to take the role of highly expressing the displeasure of the amount of blockages that we're seeing on these roads. So if it's Crystal and/or anybody else, I would really appreciate if you would carry that message, because this year, I'm not going to be able to go on that ride. Jason?
I won't either, but I agree in terms of opportunity, and I wonder if it's possible for staff to help provide any of the council members that will be attending with some data in terms of...
That would be awesome.
Vehicles per day through those corridors, you know, just some anecdotal items that could be, you know, had at the ready by whoever's on that train and has that opportunity. I think, you know, obviously, we can't do any formal studies in the immediate term, it's next week, but just even some rough observation, if you can get some folks out to do some AM, PM looks at what's happening in those key corridors to help give some, you know, context for what's going on.
You know, I would actually be willing to go a step further and say, if this council would allow, I would sign another letter of concern from me, and you could give it to them and say, look, the mayor and council are not happy about what's going on. And it's going to the point now where we're going to have to do something about it, and we don't want to, you know, if you don't want us writing your engineers tickets for blocking these crossings, then you need to come down and sit down with Chris Kramer and work out a scenario to where you're going to keep these trains from blocking our roads, because we have emergency access that needs to get through.
And that's the key, I think the life safety needs to be maximized. I don't know if Rick or whomever could reach out to the fire department to get some additional input.
Yeah, maybe we can get something from the fire department, the police department.
But I agree, I would...
And from the mayor's office.
I would move to have such a letter written with, by staff with council support for use by the riders of the train next week.
Is there a second to that? Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to second that.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. At least that'll give you some ammunition, Ms. Elliott, when you're on that ride, and I'll give you a couple of business cards after the meeting, and you can give him my business card and go, you know, you might want to call the guy because he's not happy. I mean, I'll do everything I can to start clearing up some of these crossings, but they've added additional 500 cars a day to the UP track, and that's fine that they're doing business, but they need to not block the roadways. We're limited already with the arsenal where it's at, and with the amount of highways and tracks that we have, natural barriers, that we can't afford to have them blocking our primary routes for emergency equipment. And that's how I'd ask you to spell it out, yes?
If you're going to reach out, could you also reach out to 27J Transportation?
Yeah.
Those school buses get stuck there, and they're stuck for 30 minutes, the kids are going home late. A school bus driver is not allowed to back up a school bus and turn it around without police assistance. So typically, they just sit there for the 30, 40 minutes, and then every student that needs to be picked up after that is running late, so please include them.
Well, and what I would say is, Councilwoman Elliott, if for some reason you don't get the opportunity to meet with him because he doesn't participate like he did last year, this year, then I'd still like the information, and I would be happy to go with Chris Kramer or somebody and drive up to La Salle and give it to him. I just want to make, it's getting terrible. And I know we're doing the signs, and that, but we need to set the tone.
Right.
You can't do this.
And let me just clarify.
Yeah, no, I'll do that if I go up there.
Let me just clarify, I believe I said Highway 85, I meant Highway Two, so Highway Two and 104th, but I figured maybe you caught on when I said Turnberry.
That's the Burlington Northern, so that wouldn't be the guy to talk to about that crossing. However, since you're going to be, have the opportunity with Highway Two on the UP, pass it along, and if you don't get that opportunity, I'll personally drive up there with a staff member and deliver the message myself, because phone calls just don't seem to be working. Anything else, Ms. Elliott?
No, that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two items to discuss. One, I talk about every week, it seems now, where there's a study session or a regular meeting, the dog track weeds on there. I tried to explain to somebody that I was, something that I brought up last week is study session, but they weren't at study session, so they said, well, you make sure you bring it up again, and so I'm bringing it up again. And that section right across from the King Supers, where the old dog track stands were and everything, it needs to be graded, the weeds need to be, talk about Russian thistle and everything else, the weeds need to be sprayed, and, I mean, we have about, maybe two weeks before we see Sandy Crowthers again, so I would like to get it done while, before she comes in. And each week, we talk about it, and I hear that Public Works is going to go over and do it, but I never see them over there doing anything. The second thing, where I was watching the four o'clock news on Channel Nine today, they did this big story on the 88th Street Drive-In. And so, it is no longer just a little problem, it has become a big issue in the metro area. She is building a ground swell of people that she's being persecuted. And one of the things she's trying to do is go from regular projectors to digital and everything, but she's using us as...
The reason she can't.
The reason is she can't, and she, not that they cost $100,000, but we're the ones that are standing in our way for any improvements or anything with it. So after the story this afternoon, expect to hear a lot more about the 88th and Rosemary Drive-In, because she did a great job of sympathizing herself today on TV.
Did anyone else see it besides me? I didn't. Okay. The chief did. Brian?
Yeah, I saw the material.
For council's benefit, we are finalizing a letter that will be sent to the owner of the drive-in, clearly identifying the public safety concerns with the current way in which the drive-in is being operated. That letter will include not only concerns from the Commerce City Police Department, but concerns from the Colorado State Police, concerns from the South Adams County Fire Protection District, concerns from the Adams County Sheriff's Office. There are serious concerns, safety concerns with how access into and out of the drive-in is being managed. Leaving the situation as is is not an option.
Right.
But we have approached them with alternatives, alternatives at little or no cost to the drive-in, to help mitigate some of these safety concerns. We're committed to continuing to work with the owner to solve the problem. What we're not getting, in my opinion, is much cooperation back from the owner. That's why we believe it's necessary to send this letter, we'll make sure City Council has copied on that letter, so you will understand what the concerns are of these various public safety agencies. The Commerce City Police Department is simply the lead agency, but it's not only police department safety concerns, but those of these other agencies. So we're committed to working cooperatively with the owner, but it needs to get resolved.
Okay.
I'm done.
All right, I had a couple that I wanted to bring up. When Renee brought up the Sandy Crowthers, the concerns with the dog track property and the weed issue, I want to make sure that not only are all of our properties in compliance, I want to make sure that School District 14 properties are in compliance as well because of the fire situation with the gentleman who has property damage because of the weed issue. So can we make sure that our properties and School District 14 properties are in compliance, and any other public entities, whether it's the Fire District or Water District, I don't want to leave anybody out, but try to look at some of these bigger entity-owned properties, and make sure that we're treating the public side, the public sector, the same as we are the private sector when it comes to enforcement of weeds, including ourselves. Secondly, I wanted to bring up the Carl's Dairy. The Carl's Dairy people have been contacting me and putting a lot of pressure, frankly, because apparently by ordinance, the solicitation ordinance does not allow Carl's Dairy to offer their services through their dairy service for, to our residents, based on our ordinance for solicitation. ordinance for solicitation. They called me, I sent them to the city attorney's office, they talked to Karen, Karen sent them back to me, and their request is to do an exemption to the ordinance, however, after talking to Brian today, he wants to have the opportunity to engage in it, find out what's going on, if we need to do the exemption, or if it could be a part of some other pieces that need to be taken care of at the same time. I just don't want to let it linger too long, because they've already been back and forth a few times. So I'd like to allow the council to direct staff to look into the exemption needs for Carl's Dairy, to be able to service our community. Sure. Is there any concerns with that? Jason?
I think the subject of, we're talking about the ability to go door-to-door and solicit and give somebody a gallon of milk and say, "Try my service" kind of a thing, or-
No, this is to be able to, say they're, say I have their service, and I have a box, and they leave a gallon of milk in it every day, and they send me a bill?
Yep.
To be able to go to my next-door neighbor and go, "Hey, you know what, we're serving your neighbor."
Right.
Would you like this service? They can't do that because of our solicitation laws.
Right. How does Robinson and how does Longmont get around it?
Well, apparently Carl's is trying to do it the right way, not by violating our ordinance.
Yep.
But it's having an impact on their ability to serve our neighborhoods with that service if they so desire. And I would say it goes a step beyond Robinson's and some of those, it goes into the Seattle Fish Company, these guys with steaks in the back of their trucks. It seems like everybody that wants to come into our neighborhoods and sell, whether it's ice cream, or corn on the cob, or steaks, they do it without regard to our ordinance. And so I've got to give Carl some credit for contacting me at least a half a dozen times, trying to fix the problem so that they can service our community with milk. And in some of our areas where you're not really close to a grocery store-
Yep.
-it makes it difficult, and I know, you know, for years when my kids were little, we actually used the service, but they can't come and solicit the service to you, even if you wanted it. So it makes it kind of frustrating. So we got some, do you need a, nothing other, you got the direction? And if anyone on council has a problem with that direction, you can speak up now, so that they know. All right, you're good to go? And last, but not least, on the administrative council business, I wanted to thank whoever put the little fans up here, because that helps a bunch.
Since I think the staff person responsible's left, I'm happy to take credit for that.
Yeah, would you? Yeah, something good for you to go home with tonight, pat yourself on the back there, Brian.
Was it John? We're not sure, I suspect it was John Howard, but we will-
That's awesome, and you know-
-check and pass those kudos along.
It has made a huge difference for me tonight, because there's no vent by me, and it gets really hot, but this is helping. So, thank you. Brian?
I did have one item of administrative council business. At last week's study session, several council members indicated they wouldn't be here next week, I just wanted to confirm that. A quorum is not necessary for a study session, but I thought it was a good idea to make sure we get a good idea of who's going to be out of town next week, so the council members here will know we'll have a little smaller crowd.
Steve, Renee, and Andrew, were you out? You're not out, Steve? You're going to be here?
I think it's just me and Andrew.
Renee and Andrew. Okay.
Okay.
That help?
That's helpful, thank you.
Perfect. All right, we'll go into the report portion of the agenda. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute this week's version of the City Manager Report, it's fairly brief. We have an update on our mosquito control services, updated information from the police department to better address dog safety in our community, and some information about National Night Out, along with this month's version of the Development Report, weekly capital improvement program update, and our weekly look ahead to the City Council work schedule. As always, reach out if you have any questions.
All right. Mr. Gaylor?
The only item I have is to remind you that you and I have a get-together on Friday for a deposition.
I'll be there.
Okay, you're riding with me.
Yeah, I'm riding with you.
Okay.
All right. Keep, you just keep poking me with that, don't you?
Gee, many Christmases.
I want some Christmas.
All right. I'll go into my report. Airport Coordinating Committee meeting the 16th. Let's see, meeting with Jack Hagaman to talk about the Vinsel Golf Tournament that's coming up, Rotary, meeting with Bill Clace concerning 96th Avenue, Brian actually got to sit in on some of that. Rotary again, had a Water Commission meeting last week, Rotary again, and then myself and Brian and Renee went up and met with Congressman Ed Perlmutter, and then we had the Fourth Fest. And I want to give kudos to the city staff that worked hard to make sure they put up, everything was done well. We had the staff support that we needed for that event, and the Parks Department and everybody else, the police department, anybody who engaged in that event. I thought it went very well this year, so kudos to the staff who all had a piece of working on that project. And then today, myself and Mr. Teeter spent the majority of the day, and into the afternoon with DIA mediation and the Airport Coordinating Committee meeting. And then that brings us to this point in time. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to my report?
I'd just like to thank everybody for 4th of July.
Well, push your button so that they can hear you, and go ahead.
I would like to thank everybody for the 4th of July. It was a great celebration, great fireworks display, we had great time on stage, we have two dancers here that it doesn't, they don't care where they're at, when they get the feeling, they start dancing, okay? But we had a good time on the 4th of July with my council members, I really enjoyed being with you guys, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
I just wanted to remind everybody, this Thursday is the start of Music in the Park 2014 Concert Series. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Pioneer Park. Pioneer Park is at 5950 Holly Street, and the band performing this Thursday will be Soul X. It will be a great time, so. I will be at the game, so I won't be there to witness it, so I apologize, but hopefully everybody does come out and has a great time.
Thank you. And just for all of our residents that are here and that are watching on TV, the World Lacrosse Championships start Thursday, and there's going to be a lot of people in our community, please bear with any traffic issues, and Quebec's going to probably be pretty full for the next 10 days, as we will have 38 countries participating, and up to 150,000 visitors a day for that event. Please go and enjoy the festivities that are taking place, but just a note of caution that if you're trying to get down Quebec to get into Denver or vice versa, you might look at alternate routes, just because there's going to be a lot of activity and positive press for Commerce City with the World Lacrosse. With that, I'll go to Councilman Douglas.
I want to give a shout-out to the South Adams Fire Department and Stout Street for helping one of residents out over the weekend with the neighborhood cleanup, along with Councilman Renee Bullock and Youth Commission.
Okay. And Councilwoman Elliott?
Actually, I was going to make the announcement that JD just announced our Music in the Park Series, and again, we'll have it this Thursday, next Thursday, and the following Thursday. And I plan to be at all three, not so much dancing as much if my partner's not going to be there with me, or the dancing cows from the Chick-fil-A stand, but it's going to be a fun time, so I just encourage you to go. And just again, my thanks to all the staff. 4th of July, you know, festival was fun, weather scares there a little bit, but it was fun overall, and just thanks for all the hard work.
Agreed. Thank you. And that brings us to the part where we have to continue our executive session, so I'm not going to close the meeting until after the executive session, and I'll come back in here and do that, but we didn't get through all of our executive items that we needed to tonight, so we're going to go in and finish our executive session, and then I'll come out and close out the meeting. Thank you all for being here this evening.
And I would announce, Mr. Mayor, this executive session is a continuation of the executive session that was called at the beginning of this meeting.
Correct. For the record. Thank you again.
Mayor, can I grab your signature real quick before you go back in there?
Mayor, can I grab your signature real quick before you go back in there?
...
For me, can I?
That is, that is like you are.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to the floor. And then.